Good afternoon, everybody. Just to let you know, make sure you're in the right, where you want to be, not the right spot, where you want to be. This is Innovation for Impact: How Digital Transformation Enables Procurement to Be a Superhero to Your Agency, Bonfire Interactive Case Study. I'm Bob Castronova, I'm from the city of Norwich, Connecticut. A couple of housekeeping general things. I'm asking that you please all silence your electronic devices for the duration of the presentation. And there will be surveys for individual sessions will be available within the session description of the virtual platform for all attendees to complete upon ending of the session. Overall form surveys will be available within the virtual platform following the presentation. I'm going to introduce the panel here, and then I'm going to turn it over to them. We have Mitchell Shim from Bonfire, Cherie Estrada from the Tacoma School District, Brenda Byers-Banks from North Carolina State University, Adam Sterns from the Magnolia ISD, and Glenn Osteen from Columbia County.
Thanks so much. And welcome, everyone, to our panel today. Hopefully, you'll be able to take away some learnings from today. Really, what we're focusing on is learning from all the panelists, getting their experience driving e-procurement at their agency, and really what pushed them there. And we're going to look at the different procurement superpowers that we'll talk about today that's helped been enabled by procurement technology, as well as the new challenges that it's allowed, you know, each of our panelists to be able to tackle. And what we'll also hopefully learn is how procurement technology is making a direct impact on our communities, specifically the communities of each of our panelists, as well as hopefully, you know, all of yourselves as well. And so that's going to open up our first question here, which is really aimed at the group. The question is, following the theme of today's session, "How Digital Transformation Enables Procurement to be a Superhero for Your Agency." And so looking to all of you, can you each tell me a bit more about the technology solutions that you use as part of your procurement process? And what pushed you to pursue procurement technology in the first place?
I'll go. I'm Cherie with Tacoma School District. We use a lot of technology for our procurement process. We have an ERP system that went digital in 2008, and we have a new one that we implemented in December. We use Bonfire, of course, for our bidding and contract management. Before that, we used Public Purchase. We found that just going digital and not having the paper floating around just really helped our end users and helped some of our directors and other approvers along the way. Our P-card system is also fully automated. We use Informed K-12 for that process. So, as a district, we have a lot of different technology moving around that drives our procurement processes.
I'm Adam Sterns. So, I'm also from a school district. And, you know, I got there five years ago, and they were still doing paper bids. And I wasn't used to that world, and so I knew immediately we needed to do something electronic and more automated. And so, before we did any bids that year, we ended up going with Bonfire. And the data that's available to you through Bonfire, or any really e-procurement system, is incredible to be able to take back to your administration, to your higher level, and show them the cost savings and everything that you're doing at a procurement level, and how it's benefiting your end users.
I'm with a county government in Georgia, Columbia County, Georgia. We use Tyler Munis for our ERP systems. We've used, or tried numerous e-procurement softwares over the years. But we founded, found Bonfire in 2019 here at one of the conferences and implemented it. And we've been blown away by what it can do. We've got Conga Navitas, that's our contract software, and we use CityWorks, that does a lot of our inventory and delivery stuff within the office. But, just like everybody else, it was the result of paper. It was filing cabinets full of bids and documents, the retention of those documents. And so, by going electronic with everything, it's really, it's freed up a lot of space and just really expedited the entire process for everyone that's involved and the workflows. And it's just been, it's been great. And I wouldn't go backwards to save my life now.
I'm Brenda with NC State University. And our ERP system is on base as of right now, pretty much the same as the rest of the panelists. We were using paper to do all of our bidding, and we really went over to Bonfire because of our request for proposals, having to open those at 5:00 PM, each envelope by hand, versus just being able to, you know, put it all in electronically and have an open, you know, a close date, and then we were able to just scan each one electronically. Just really makes a big difference for NC State.
Awesome. So, we heard from the panel, you know, a lot about the transformative technology and how that's kind of helped their processes, which is actually a great segue into our next panel question here, which is really, what does it mean to be a procurement superhero? I think we can all maybe look a little introspectively there, but a little bit more specifically, how does your procurement team make a tangible impact on the communities you serve? And how does procurement technology play a role? You spoke to a little bit, but if you could elaborate on it, you know, all of you working with slightly different communities.
Well, I guess, you know, going back to, again, the data that you have available to you, and how you can take it to be able to help other people make decisions in that process. And ultimately, you know, in my world, it's all about students, and it's all about ensuring that they have everything they need. Teachers have everything they need to be successful in what they do. And so, taking that data and providing that to anybody in our administration that needs it to help with those results and kind of driving our focus as well.
The superhero part's kind of interesting, because we all know as procurement officials that we're really the redheaded stepchild. Nobody likes to deal with us because they can't get what they want. And we've all experienced that. It's just, it's like pulling teeth. But being able to use a system where you can get folks what they want, when they want it, from the right suppliers, it really, it makes you look good. And, you know, and not only with our administration and employees within our county, but the vendors as well, because now things that they, for instance, construction drawings that they used to have to pay for, now we upload them in the system when we have the bid out there. They're able to download these PDF. They want to get them printed at a Kinko's and have full-size drawings, they can. They don't have to go and put deposits on plans with the engineers or architects. So, really, we've kind of become the superhero on both sides of it. We're saving the vendors money by being able to do this. They can actually sit in their office, because we've incorporated not only with Bonfire, but with WebEx, so that we actually open all of our bids electronically through Bonfire, but via WebEx. People can still come to the office, but when we have vendors that are two and three hours away, they can join us and see the live bid openings and things. And really, it makes you look great on both sides of the aisle, which is kind of a unique position where we are. We've got to protect our agency, but we've also got to protect the vendors, or we will never get another bid from anyone. So, it's, we've done both, and it's really been great to get the feedback from them.
I know for NC State, going from paper to using Bonfire really helped us be able to reach out to more vendors in the community, and that's the biggest thing for us, is we want to actually award bidders in our community versus having to outsource. So, for example, we just closed an RFP for the scooters, the electronic scooters that I'm sure you all see everywhere. And we were actually able to go with a local vendor in Raleigh, North Carolina, where NC State is, versus having to maybe use Bird or Lime that are just as good, but we'd rather keep it all in the community if we can. And Bonfire has really enabled us to reach out to more local vendors to get the goods and services that we need.
To piggyback off of both, Glenn and Brenda, our vendor community has really enjoyed Bonfire as far as on the construction side, small businesses, being able to be subcontractors when you do a public construction bid in there. They can see documents, they can see the big vendors, they can select themselves to be a sub. So, it's kind of coordinating and connecting those large vendors with the small subs. The transparency of the process, so not only are the vendors seeing the transparency, but so is anyone in the community who wants to go and look at our bids and download them, plan centers, the newspaper. We get a lot of calls about it, so they can go there. And then, as far as our internal stakeholders and kind of being their procurement heroes, they can be anywhere, and they can get the documents if they're on the evaluation team. They don't have to be sitting at a desk, they're not waiting for us to give them a paper folder and copy it over to them, you know. They have a couple of options in Bonfire to view it on the screen or download the PDF. And that alone has just really made a difference, and them participating in the bids and just wanting to be a part of it.
And kind of piggybacking off of that as well with the community, I mean, we, for many years, had community members in an uproar, because we're having to use cooperative purchasing, and that's great for a lot of, but being able to do our bids through Bonfire and get those local vendors, and our local Chamber of Commerce just went nuts about it. So, it's a huge deal for everybody in the community.
And it was great to hear across the panel, I mean, you can't get a better definition of superhero, all of them talking about how, you know, using these technologies to better serve their communities, their internal organizations, their vendors, the public, the students. And I'm sure, hopefully, it also is helping themselves individually, but of course, they're going to speak about everyone else. But that's honestly great, and that's why we have them all here. And here's where we can dive into it a little bit deeper. You know, all of you are procurement professionals, champions, superheroes in your own right. You each have your own distinct procurement superpowers, which is really why, you know, you're up here speaking for us and with everyone here today. And so, we'll get things started, and I'd like to throw this first question over to Cherie. So, Cherie, would you be able to speak to the importance of collaboration, and how procurement technologies helped you step up procurement with Tacoma School District?
Absolutely. We're a huge district in collaboration, and the use of Bonfire has really allowed us to not only collaborate with our internal stakeholders, providing an opportunity for question and answers just directly with them within Bonfire, sharing the documents and being able to view it, but as well as the vendor side. It's allowed us to collaborate and kind of see what the vendor would see in Bonfire, of how they would respond to the bid, and kind of make some adjustments and changes as we see those results, or, oh, that's not really what I wanted the vendor to answer, and go back and change our procurement. And it's just overall really allowed that transparency through collaboration of working on the documents, or sharing things with some of my outside. We do contract some project managers externally for our large construction projects, and there's some ways that I can share the documents in the process with them as the project manager. Still withhold, you know, that purchasing hold on it, so I'm governing the process, but they're able to see the documents and see vendors and see things as they're happening. And that's really made that process much easier for all of us through that collaboration.
Awesome. That's great to hear, Cherie. I'll actually open it up to the group, too, if anyone would like to add to that, I mean, the importance of collaboration and, you know, how you've been able to use technology to step up procurement.
Yeah, I just want to piggyback off of what Cherie said. Having Bonfire and being able to send out, like, vendors being able to ask questions within the system. So, and we've gone away from, I mean, we have our email for the vendors to email us, but we try to get them to do all of their asking of questions within the system, and, you know, we can answer them in the system. And same way with internal, you've got the approval process, you've got where your internal stakeholders can email questions back and forth. You've got public-facing files and internal files, so you can separate these things. And just having all of the collaboration in one spot, where you don't have, you know, emails with three different people, or what, it's all in one place. So, if you ever need to look back and, you know, God forbid, we ever have a protest, everything is right there in one spot where you can download it and, you know, to defend what, you know, we did. So, it's really great to have it in that one spot.
I can speak to the new project flow as far as now there's a feature for editors, which really helps me. I'm actually the, I'm just in charge of request for proposals as far as the administrative aspect. So, it really helps me to connect with the buyers and be able to, while it's still in the draft status, have them approve it, make sure that the documents inside of Bonfire look accurate, the requested documentation that we want is accurate, the evaluators, the reviewers, everything, as far as that aspect is all accurate before it even goes out. That way, we're, one, cutting down on the amount of addendums that we're having to post for each bid, but we're also able to come together in one space versus going from prior, it was Google Docs, maybe even we're trying to comment and collaborate in Word documents through email, and it just centralizes it all into Bonfire, which is really nice.
Awesome. Thanks, Brenda, there. It's interesting, because, I guess contextually, I used to help implement Bonfire as a procurement technology for a lot of organizations, so it just sounds like kind of everyone's loving that one-stop-shop, everyone can kind of pop into it. And I know a big thing at the end, too, is, you know, being able to get reporting that type of information all in one go. So, that's great to hear. And Brenda, keeping on that same topic, it's kind of a nice segue, I'll throw the next question your way. I know you have experience in the digital transformation at NC State University. Could you speak to us a little bit more about your team, and how you've leveraged e-procurement to transform your processes?
Yes. So, piggybacking on what I said a little while earlier, is the automatic opening and closings of projects, which is really nice for us, because, one, the administrative aspect, we're not running around, and then the buyers aren't running around either. So, that really kind of helps ease the process. Still, sometimes, you know, all departments aren't going to be happy at the, you know, how fast we're going, but it really has made a big impact on how quickly we're getting projects out there, and the timely response that we're getting from vendors, as well as, as you just mentioned, we call it our one-shop, one-stop-shop. The department reviewers are able to see all documents without waiting for a direct email, which is normally, prior to Bonfire, we had to send them all the bids, bid tabulations that we created, any cost sheets. Now, everything is in Bonfire. The bid table, which is our version of a cost sheet, is in there, questionnaires, as well as the actual vendor response, and they're all able to go in there and score them and get back with the buyer without having to use any outside software such as, you know, Google Workspace, or separate Microsoft Excel sheets.
Awesome. Yeah, that's great to hear. And I'll kind of throw that question up again to the rest of the panel, just the idea of, you know, learning more about your teams and how they've used e-procurement to transform processes.
Just kind of piggybacking off of what Brenda said, I've got my procurement supervisor in a room, so he's probably not shooting me, but Chris is, when, we all want to do an RFP, it's very cumbersome. I mean, you've got questions, you've got tables, it's just, it's a lot of work, it's a lot different than a bid. But Chris has got this thing down to a science in Bonfire, using the questionnaires and things like this. I bet you, you give Chris specs right now, in probably 30 minutes, he would have a complete RFP out the door. Because he's done them so long, we've got our front-end documents and things that we, that are the same in all of our RFPs and things. And having that, he's able to basically just the questionnaire and get that completed, and that RFP's out the door. So, it's really, really saved time. And the lady that works for Chris that does our bids, she's the same way. When you get the bid table with the line item specs that you're looking for, when you upload this into the bid table, and you've got all your front-end documents that you use on every bid, these creating bids really is very, very quick, and it's amazing. And I hope there's no supervisors in a room that aren't procurement professionals and want to reduce the staff now, but it really has reduced our overall time from cradle to grave in the procurement process.
Well, and continuing along those lines, the evaluation process, and, I mean, we used to have to have, hold multiple meetings in person, having to go through everything and talk through everything, but being able to communicate to each other through Bonfire, and then everybody evaluates everything on their own through Bonfire, is an incredible change in process and a big time saver.
So, to piggyback off of that as well, one of the best things in Bonfire that's done for our staff and our evaluators is evaluating the questionnaires, is they can compare them side by side on the screen together. So, they're not hunting and trying to flag and remember and go back when they're reading those long paper ones. They can select a view that allows them to look at the one question you asked, and let's say you had six respondents, and it's going to show you each six different vendor on the same screen, and you can compare them against each other. And so, that's been great for our evaluators, they've really enjoyed that aspect. And you can still make notes in Bonfire, they can flag things, you know, but just that simpleness of being able to see them all up against each other has really improved their ability to evaluate much quicker and feel like they're really understanding what they're looking at.
Oh, yeah. I mean, really, kind of, they all emphasize on the idea of kind of doing more with less. Lots of piggybacking, too, so I think everyone's back's going to be a little sore later, but excuse my joke there. Apologize. But, yeah, no, that's really great to hear. I'll take us to the next question, spare you any more jokes. But this one's for Adam. And this one's going to move on to the topic of client service. So, we understand client service is so important, it's really at the heart of procurement. And so, could you speak to your experience at Magnolia ISD, and how you've worked to make a positive impact on the students you serve?
Yes. So, again, the whole reason that I exist, or anybody in my organization exists, is for students and, you know, their education. And so, something that has been incredibly beneficial, you know, we talk about obtaining feedback. I'm huge on obtaining feedback from our end users. And while I'm not going to send a survey out to students and see how things are going, I can at least send surveys out to each campus. And they, you know, obviously, our campus secretaries, they get a lot of feedback from everybody on how things are working. So, being able to, you know, send out surveys to them specifically through Bonfire, and be able to get their feedback, and how things are working with specific vendors, specific contracts. But then it doesn't stop there. We take it to the vendor, and we can say, hi, this is the feedback we're receiving from our end users, this is how things are going in our district with your contract. And whether it's positive or negative, if it's negative, it's something that they can work on, or it may be a miscommunication, it may be something that we all need to work on within that contract. So, being able to do that, and then take it back to our end users and say, okay, we've addressed this issue and hope that it's fixed, and be able to follow up with them later to ensure that they're receiving exactly what they need from that contract.
Gotcha. Yeah, thanks, Adam. And, I mean, again, same question to everyone else, I'll open it up to the panel if you have anything to add, but I'm just speaking to experience at your own organizations, and how you've worked to make a positive impact on, you know, students, or really just the communities that you're serving, too.
First, I'd like to ask a question. How many folks in here use Bonfire? Okay, quite a number. When we got ready to implement Bonfire, because the most important thing is, again, is communication with your vendors. And if your vendors aren't happy with any platform, it's going to reduce the number of bids you get. So, when we got ready to look at Bonfire, and we kind of had a, I guess, a trial production thing going, we went out and looked, and we found the oldest road construction owner that we could find. Buddy had a flip phone that he didn't even know how to text on. And we brought Buddy into the office and sat him down at our conference room table with a laptop, and asked him, could he do this? And Buddy had no problem, I don't know, Chris, probably in his 70s, close to it, he had no problem completing a road construction bid in Bonfire. And when we did that, because we needed to know whether our vendors were going to be comfortable. Because if they're not comfortable, it doesn't matter what we do, it's going to reduce the number of bids. And by doing that, finding someone that had no technology experience, then we knew that everyone else would welcome the experience. And we constantly get raving reviews, not just because of what we did, but because of the platform, because they can sit in Atlanta, and, you know, two and a half hours away, and they can submit their bid, because we all know that general contractors are waiting on subs' prices before they can submit their bid. And so, they're sitting in your parking lot five minutes before the bid openings, just so that they can write down that last number, or scribble something on the outside of an envelope, or what have you. We don't do that anymore. We have our bids closed at 12, and we open them live at 2. So, it gives the vendors time to, you know, to do their thing. They can sit in their office and talk, and that, you know, listening to the vendors and actually providing those services to them through this portal has, I mean, it's just been, it's been awesome. They really, really enjoy that, and we get positive feedback all the time because of it.
For us on the vendor community side and client services, it's really helped with our responsiveness, in ensuring that the vendors are providing you all the documents you need, as long as you request the right documents, right? But it kind of goes from red to green from them. It's a really easy check-off and checklist upload, so they're not missing simple things anymore. They're not missing that signature page, or they're not missing that cost sheet, because it won't let them hit the final submit button until they have everything uploaded, and it's gone from red to green. And so, I've had some great feedback from vendors about that, that they love it. It kind of is their extra double-check for themselves. And then, also, I've had one or two vendors who struggle a little, maybe we're unsure, but they just rave about the help that they get from Bonfire. Being able to use that big question mark that's there for them, and just the ability that Bonfire's right there, they're super responsive, they know that we have bid closing time, and inevitably, it's 1:30 before 2 o'clock bid closing, and they just can't get it to work, right? You know, they waited till the last minute. But Bonfire's always right there to not only help you as the client, but to help your customers, and ensure that you're successful for them being able to, you know, propose and submit bids. So, that's a great.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone. And I think it kind of goes to show, too, with the idea of moving to procurement technology. You know, we talked about client service, obviously, all of you, you know, are able to provide, you know, a better experience for your communities using technology, but of course, when choosing technology, it's also so important to make sure that, you know, in working to service all the communities, including the vendor community, that there's a support team there that's also helping with rollout, with continued support. So, those are some, I think, key things to keep an eye out for, that, you know, all of these superheroes have commented on in some way, shape, or form. And so, I'll take us to our next question, and, you know, last but not least, this one's aimed at Glenn here. And so, Glenn, we've seen agencies increase their focus on vendor diversity recently. And so, I'm wondering, why do you feel vendor diversity is so important, and why are agencies making it more of a priority?
Well, I guess, when I looked this up, I kind of went to statistics. Diverse, diversity, diverse teams, diverse vendors, believes the better, problem-solving, innovation. Seventy-six percent of all diverse suppliers met by our expectation, 23% exceeded that expectation. Almost half of the workforce in the United States is employed by small business, minority-owned businesses, 47.9%, I believe it is. There is over, let's see here, 18% of American businesses are small and minority-owned businesses. There's over a, like, a $1.3 trillion worth of money that's flowing into our economy. And they generated, in the last decade, over 50% of all the businesses that were created were minority, small disadvantaged businesses. And 99.9% of all businesses in the United States are classified as small business, minority-owned businesses, those two categories. So, yeah, they're imported, because without them, I don't think we have an economy. So, if we don't have things in place that, or either there's preferences, or either you're trying to reach out to them and say, hey, you know, here's how you register with our agency, or what have you, if we neglect this group of businesses, then really, we've, I mean, our economy will shut down, because it is what makes America what it is, is the small minority and disenfranchised businesses.
Gotcha. Thanks, Glenn. And once again, I'll open it up to the rest of the panel, if anyone wants to speak a little bit more to vendor diversity and organizations making it more of a priority.
Well, you know, when it comes to small businesses specifically, or just local businesses even, the partnership you receive with them as well, specifically coming from a school district, you know, you don't necessarily get something like that from, you know, the ma- massive corporations. You're not going to get that experience that's really going to help your end users get what they need. You're going to have, you know, more of a, you know, typical experience that, that isn't bad, but isn't over the top, isn't exactly perfect for what you guys need. So you can tailor that experience with those local vendors and really be able to benefit your end users when it comes to their relationship with those local small businesses.
As far as our school district, we do have an inclusion plan or goal within our district of fifteen percent for small, local, minority owned businesses. And on our capital projects, we far exceed that. We've worked really hard and Bonfire has helped us, or even just procurement in general, of helping meet those goals to facilitate some of those small businesses partnering with our larger construction partners to grow their business and be there. And it helps, we're funded by the public dollar, right? So for our school district, our bonds and levies. We're a very lucky district in the sense that Tacoma has never not passed a bond or a levy. But this last year for our 2020 bond, it was the first year our chambers actually endorsed us. And it was because of the work we had been doing in our local community and tracking our local spend and really putting our dollars back into the community of the students and the families that we serve. And we've also have some apprenticeship programs that we've been utilizing through this and through our public works and even through our students at the high school level. So it's important.
I want to add one more thing to the statistics. The federal government is the largest spender or, you know, buying of products or what have you in the world. But currently, only ten percent of those contracts go to small minority disenfranchised businesses. Well, in April of this year, GSA announced it through the current administration, the goal now, there's an initiative in place, and the goal is to reach a fifty percent contract rate by the year 2025. So that's, that's, that's the goal. So I mean, at the federal level, they're seeing it too, that, that we've got to have the small business and we, we need to do something to, to increase the amount of, the amount of contracts that we're issuing to the small business and minority owned businesses.
Gotcha. Thank, yeah, thanks so much for that. Lots of research there too with the statistics. We can appreciate the numbers. Yeah, and that kind of takes us to, you know, we've, we've heard from all of our panelists, you know, individually about their procurement superpowers. The one we actually didn't talk about today yet was cost savings. So opening this up to the group, really, why is it important that procurement teams prioritize cost savings in their decision-making? And how can technology help with that?
That's scary right now. Cost savings is, cost savings is tough right now. We all realize that with the market we're in. You know, with Bonfire, we do have the ability to put in, you know, what, what current spends are, what our budgets are, and we can get some reports out of it. But unfortunately, right now, in, in the economy we're in, we're, and I don't, it may be across the board, we're seeing at a minimum a fifty percent increase in, in everything that we've ever done. Our budgets that we planned, maybe planned last year or two years ago in a, in a SLOSS package or what have you. I mean, they're being blown out of the water. I mean, because of the way the, the market is. But I mean, cost savings is the most important thing about what we do. Because again, we're being stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. And if we don't do everything we can to get the best service for the lowest price, then, you know, we're not doing our taxpayers a service. But it's just tough right now to, to find any savings anywhere.
Well, and then kind of going off of that as well, it's kind of changed from finding cost savings to finding the least amount of increase that you can. But taking the, the data that you have available, I mean, we're dealing with limited budgets. And, you know, in, in education, specifically in my state, you know, we're, we're hindered by what the state puts in place as to what we're going to get. And so those increases hurt. But again, taking as much data as you can from what you've got in your system and being able to determine, okay, this is where I can at least attempt to save some or, or maybe not get, have as much of an increase, helps to kind of make it less painful.
I don't have very much experience with what the budgets are, being that I'm on the administrative aspect, but I know when it comes to awarding, specifically just any type of competitive bid, it usually goes to the lowest bidder as long as, you know, they've, if they have worked with us before, they're in good standing with us, they did a good job. But it kind of piggy, piggybacks, sorry, it kind of piggybacks, yeah, okay, there we go, on the small businesses, which we use EO50s for. So even if a different company is offering us the lowest price because of the EO50 filled out, we're able to give the small business owner or company that same matching price, which is really nice because as they spoke to already, it really helps to create that partnership with our own community. And working at a university, it lets the students know that if they continue to, you know, work and live in our community and they want to have a small business one day or grow a business in Raleigh one day, that they can partner with the university eventually, even regardless of their size, just because we really are looking into cost savings, but also extending the reach within our community and making sure that we give our community the opportunities that they deserve.
Right, yeah. And I mean, I can speak to even a little bit on the, the tech side, you know, being responsible for some of these implementations. And I think the bottom line is, you know, we look at cost savings, we're kind of in unprecedented times. You know, my focus tends to be a little bit more on the time-saving component where we can maybe use technology to help, you know, in decision-making through automation, collaboration, which, you know, everyone here has spoke to, to great effect already, as well as providing those types of insights. So, you know, even if in, in small ways, that, that tech is going to help save us some time, allow us to do more with less, I mean, there's that kind of feel or obligation to, to want to do so. So, you know, hopefully that's another way too, that technology can help push that along. What I'll do is actually, I'll move to, to the next slide, which here it's saying Q&amp;A, but really, you know, throwing it back to the panel, understanding the discussion we've had today, I'm curious if there's anything that the group would like to add, would like to comment on, you know, from what we've heard today, or would just like to elaborate on anything already discussed?
Well, something I'd like to say, just something I've heard a lot in the, in the last twelve hours really, has been, and I'd like to echo it, what we do is important. It's extremely important. And so doing yourself a favor in utilizing the, the technology that can really help you drive the results that you need and to show your entity, your organization, that what you do is important, that's going to be extremely beneficial. So just remember how, how important it is, the job that you do, because I know, you know, starting in, in public procurement years ago, that wasn't felt. There was no support from, from administration because they didn't understand exactly what procurement was or why it's important. But being able to show them through, through the data, through the technology that we have, has been a game changer.
I'll speak a little to the pandemic. We were already fully electronic, so all of our procurement processes were online and electronic. So we didn't stop. We just kept on going. It didn't matter if we were at home in our pajamas or maybe had our three-year-old or two-year-old on our lap, or we were out camping in our trailer, you know, across the state somewhere. It didn't stop. So using technology in your procurement to advance your department, to help as a resource and not a hindrance, is amazing. You know, I was camping and my team needed help with an addendum. Because it's in Bonfire, I could go in, I could look at it quickly, I could get it posted. There was no delay in the process. But when that's paper and I can't see things or something wasn't working right and I needed to check on a vendor's response, it was so nice and easy to just be able to log in and do that from where I was at camping and then went back to my camping trip with my family. So using technology in today's day and age is amazing. And with a lot of those flex schedules out there now or what people are looking for, it just, it really helps you stay innovated and moving forward in your processes.
I'll speak a little bit more just about, I'm so sorry, I lost my train of thought for a second. Goodness gracious. Oh, sorry. For anybody that's in procurement and is not sold on Bonfire or not sure that their department will be able to convert over to Bonfire and fully being automated as far as the technology aspects of bids, Bonfire is really nice about providing your company with a rep. And that rep will guide you and your team in person or by way of webinars and help everyone in your department become on board with any, any process that they have as far as evaluation, posting, drafting. They'll walk you through step by step and answer every question that you have. Especially when new features come about, they always make sure to reach out to you. They'll ask you, you know, do, do we want to set up a meeting with the department to go over it? And they'll always let you know how the features can benefit your company in particular.
Yeah, Brenda, thanks for that because that's exactly what was on my mind as far as the, the, the representation we've had at Bonfire. I don't, I think we've had a couple of problems, nothing that was disastrous. I don't think we've missed a bid, a bid deadline with anything and Chris has agreed with me shakes, so we haven't missed a bid deadline for any downtime. We've had a few problems here and there, but we all have problems. And, and, you know, the problem's not what defines you, it's your, it's your actions after the problem. And, and I can tell you that Brendan, who works with us at Bonfire, is absolutely amazing in the representation that we've gotten. There are no stupid questions. They will walk, hold your hand. And, and the implementation was absolutely seamless. And the, the, the changes they're making, you would almost think it was a, they had a room full of folks like us that were sitting, there were procurement professionals that, you know, were designing the perfect e-procurement platform because that's what it's going to. And that's what I've been searching for, for, you know, almost 15 years. And, and I think we found it and a great group of people.
And even when you end up changing reps, the next rep just picks up right where they left off. You know, in, in our ERP system, when we get reps changed, it's like starting from scratch. So when it comes to Bonfire and just being able to, just that seamless transition is impeccable.
And also, as far as Bonfire will be glad to demo anything for you. I know myself and my folks at my agency will have no problem if you want to reach out to us. We will walk you through a WebEx of how we put things together. We'll do it while you're online with a share screen. I will give you the, the links to the bid opening so you can see exactly what it looks like and how we do it. So just reach out to us if, if you want to. And, and we'll be, I'll be honest with you. I mean, we'll tell you everything that we've had good and whatever we might've had bad, we'll let you know that too. But I think it'd be encouraging to, to just like I said, log on to one of our, our bid openings just to see, since it is virtual, and just see how seamless it is and what kind of data you see when, when you click score and, and the scorecard opens up and it shows you in Excel spreadsheet form, but very elaborate spreadsheet form. It's, it's got every line item, it's got every vendor, it's got every price, it's got the color code, like the green for the lowest price. I mean, so if you're doing a line item bid, you instantly can see which vendor has the lowest price in every category. I mean, it's just absolutely phenomenal what you can see. So we'll be glad to demonstrate that for you. Just reach out to us.
One other thing that we didn't touch on too much here is, we use also the contract management module. And there's a few things that we have that we wish it did, but Bonfire has been improving and adding things as we go. But one of the things we do really like about it is, because it is public facing, it shows all of our documents and meets our statutory requirements. But you can also link the procurement back to the contract or the contract to the procurement and they can see that. So that's something that also the transparency in the vendor world outside to all your community members has really been appreciated, that they can really link up, yep, you did this procurement and oh, yep, here's the resulting contract. So that's one thing that we like.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, I think speaking to that, just the idea of when we're looking at technology solutions for procurement, you really want that holistic end-to-end type of solution. So that's something to, to keep in mind, you know, when looking at that. But you've heard us talk a lot, so now we'll actually get to the Q&amp;A on the screen here. Want to open it up to all of you. So thanks for, for attending. And we do have a mic here, so I can pass this over to you. Check if it's hot. Yep, there we go. Okay, so if you wanted to take this mic and then you can pass it along to whoever.
I'm Dan with Riley Durham Airport Authority. So you can imagine airport, in the last couple of years, our normal revenue streams dropped to almost zero. So it's even more difficult than normal to get funding allocated for things in procurement that are not revenue generating or hard dollar savings. And you hit on some good points already, eliminating paper, time savings, efficiency. Is there anything else you can add as far as your business case you put together to get the reoccurring funding to pay for Bonfire?
I think just the ability to do more bids, more things that maybe we hadn't been in the past. We're not required to, but we do curriculum bids as well now. We see both sides, the cost savings and the ability that Bonfire has allowed us to incorporate that process, the multi-step, multi-phase, multi-category into it. So just the ability to be broader and to do more in our department has helped.
And the biggest thing is, is the time-saving aspect of being able to complete as much as possible. It ends up saving money for the organization because you're able to do more with less.
Great, thank you for your question. Are there, are there any other questions in the room?
So on that same subject, when you were in your technology pursuit and you were vetting Bonfire against other platforms, what particular functionality or feature set stood out against the other platforms? How did you, how did you derive at Bonfire?
The way, the way I've always looked at software, you find a software that fits your process. Don't fit your process into a software. And so we already had a way we did things and we liked our way. I mean, it was, it was a lot of paper, it was a lot of whatever, but we were able to look at Bonfire and, and our exact process that we've always done is now a software. We didn't change our process at all. You know, the evaluation, how we evaluated, everything is the same. How we, how we split the, the percentage of calls versus the percentage of technical, how we scored all of our stuff is the same. So it's really about fitting the software into your process. And, and so whatever's important to you, that's what you've got to look at. And everybody's different about what aspects of your process do you want to see in a software? And so that's, you know, you make your list and then you go down the list and, you know, have, and when Bonfire, when they looked at our, it was like, check, 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 check. They could do it. You know, other software says, we can do it, but there's a cost. You know, we can, you know, we can go in and do, you know, API with your other program, we can do it, you know. But Bonfire, it was just check down the board. I don't think there was anything that they couldn't do when we, when we laid it out for them.
I agree with that when we use Bonfire. We have not had to change our processes that much. And I don't, I'm a latecomer, so, you know, smack me if they mention this, but that software was written by purchasing people. I was hard for not wanting to automate my purchasing process because it was either a pain or too expensive, we'd have to change our processes. We didn't change our processes, we made them better, faster. It wasn't that expensive. It's written by purchasing people. If there's one fault to it when you're beginning, there's so many different ways you can do things, but no matter what I get myself into, I'll think, they'll, they'll have an answer for this. And they do. And they do, and they will help you with it. They're affordable. We don't pay that much for our five licenses. The, the vendors love it, we love it, the departments love it. And they gave us construction because it's more transparent. Even the big plans can fit on your Bonfire bids. And, and the vendors, the construction vendors have just taken to it like ducks to water. And we are more transparent.
And ease of use for everybody, you know, I looked at multiple systems and it was so complicated. But just the cleanliness and the ease of use with Bonfire was really the determining factor for us. And the fact that they're continually innovating. You know, a lot of the other systems have been around for a long time, but I've also heard that they, they've just been doing the same thing for a long time. So the fact that it seems... So the fact that it seems every ten minutes, Bonfire's releasing something new and exciting that's tailored to exactly what we need. You know, we talk about it being a one-stop shop. Everything we're hearing for this next year, it's going to become an even more one-stop shop from start to finish. From the moment you realize you need to procure something, to the moment you need to get rid of something, you're going to have everything in one spot. So it's, it really is a one-stop shop.
Lady just mentioned plans for a second, and I, it come to my mind, a few years back, we finished a forty-one, forty-two million dollar performing arts complex. The plans, construction drawings were over eight hundred pages. The book was this thick. No problem. Usually in the past, we would have to have these in our office. Now we just have the engineers and architects send us a digital copy, and we, and it's like, there, there's nothing. And, and so it's, it's taken that aspect out, and that is huge, just, you know, and the money it saves the vendors and us as well.
One of the reasons that it was this deciding factor for NC State, basically piggybacks on what you just said, which is the innovation, they never stop. Every year, you'll get at least four, probably five new things rolled out minimum, and they're things that are easily implemented and that are actually effective versus just, you know, being another, another cog up there, yeah, just fluff. It, it's actually things that are going to help you just be more efficient. Every time you think you're, you're, it can't get any more streamlined, it does.
And lastly on that, there, there are vendor who listens. So having had it since probably about 2017, things that we've mentioned, things that we've wanted in contract management, they're doing, you know, and we're seeing the result of that. They have a new, I don't know, community, I call it the community collaboration or templates. You're able to share and see other people's projects and things like that in there, so it's great. And for us, the deciding, ultimately, the lastly deciding factor was that they had the public button. They had the ability for us to post in all of our public documents, which is a requirement for us for our inner locals and inner districts, and so no other vendor at the time could do that.
Yeah, thanks. That was obviously a great question, lots of discussion there. We'll try and do one more before, I want to make sure you all get out of here on time before we wrap up with housekeeping, but I see one more question at the back.
Hi, everyone. I'm the IT category manager for Washington DC Metro. I have a question. This, it sounds really great because it sounds like you're standardizing, customizing, streamlining processes all within one system. But one of the main issues that we have is adequate competition and then managing those points of contact. So I hear that an organization can populate the vendor list in a sense, but does Bonfire also, like, add vendors? Because a lot of the issues that we're having right now is finding those, those vendors to be a part of the competition and then building that robust list and keeping it current. So I just kind of want to hear anything anyone has experienced, keeping that up to date.
Yeah, I can do that. So one thing is, is you can have the vendor module and have them register in there, and of course, we invited all of our current vendors, sent out letters, you know, got them registered in there. But the other thing we use is the commodity codes, the NIGP commodity codes for all our projects. And so any vendor who registers for Bonfire, registers for a commodity code, and they can opt to see any agency nationwide, anybody's bids that are out there. So that's how it's really also increased our competition is because there's actually a school district here, Florida Virtual School District, who just recently bid on one of our RFPs for ELA language contract. And before, they never would have done that, but through Bonfire, and because they're registered with them, they're able to see stuff that we're putting out on the West Coast, on the East Coast, based on commodity code. And so as long as you're going in there and you're searching, and we also tell them in the advertisement, we're still required to advertise in the newspaper, what commodity codes we're going to use. So, hey, don't forget, go register for that commodity code. But it's really helped increase, you know, our visibility to people. Some commodity codes, you only get like three hundred people. I did one recently, and I think we had, I had fifteen hundred vendors registered for those commodity codes. So it's very much increased our competition.
And, and one thing, having the e-platform, e-procurement platform, Chris, one thing he did for us, he recruited our business cards, he put a QR code on the back of the card, so you can scan the, scan the QR code, and it takes people to the Bonfire site where they just, you know, click register. So, you know, little things like that make, makes a huge difference. Yeah, so, you know, pushing it out to vendors. And the more vendors that we get, the larger our vendors get. So it's, it's not like, I mean, it can come, like I said, more people that join Bonfire, the more vendors we get, and the more vendors we get, it just, it just keeps getting larger, it's exponential. So, so you can reach vendors all, all over the place. I forget how many they, I forget what the number was, last time we talked to Brendan, it was huge, the number of vendors that were within Bonfire. I was, I was quite impressed.
Yeah, I don't have the numbers offhand, too. I swear every week it's, it's different because it goes through the roof, but yeah, that's, that's a great question, and I'm sure we could get you those numbers if you wanted to, to swing by the booth there. So I think we're going to wrap up for questions for now. I guess first off, just thanks to everyone that attended. Obviously, a huge thank to our panelists, Cherie, Brenda, Adam, and Glenn. So thankful to have you here, to, to speak to us all about, you know, your experiences with digital transformation, with procurement technology, and then of course, speaking, speaking with the audience here about these great questions that came in. I want to say to come by our booth at nine eighteen to get some more information on procurement technology. As Glenn mentioned, we'd be happy to really demo anything, talk through anything as well. And you can, of course, also pick up some cool swag packs to learn more about what it's like to be a procurement superhero, or, you know, even become one yourself if you aren't already, just like our panelists here. So, yeah, definitely come by. We'll also have some interactive polls at the booth, and of course, you'll see a copy of our State of Public Sourcing report, which is really just a State of the Union on public sourcing. We talked about QR codes just now, there's also QR code right there. If you want to even get a copy right now, you can scan that. But again, thanks to everyone for coming to our Innovation for Impact panel. I really appreciate it. I hope you all have a great rest of your conference. Thanks so much.